Yours is on. Sure, I mean it's probably drunk.
Okay, at this time we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBoer, here. Truchel.
Here.
Lifer.
Here.
President Fannerstil.
Here.
Trustee Walshleger.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Holquist.
Here.
If you'd all join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have public comments. Anybody that would like to speak in public comments, please feel free to step towards the podium. Please just give your name and address.
Yeah, name is Laura Lassen Grunwald, address is 273 Hazel Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here today to let the board know, which I'm assuming you already do know, that there are issues and complaints from many in the neighborhoods near and not so near from St. Charles Church who find the amount of bell ringing to be excessively loud and it has had an adverse and frequent and it has had an adverse effect on the surrounding neighborhoods. While I understand that the resident has been in contact with Mike from the church and brought this concern to the attention of the church, there has yet to be any action or resolution taken to resolve the problem. So with the question, why are the residents finding this problematic? First and foremost, the number of bell rings. I know that Ryan was gracious enough to provide a handout that he was given, given to him from the church and I'd like to be able to. Put this on record or maybe folks feel where. So if we take a look at the schedule, I did some math here and we can discuss that later, but based on what we're currently hearing as a neighbor in that neighborhood, we are hearing the bells ring approximately 98 times per week and I'm going to repeat at least 98 times per week. Number two, the bells can be heard as far as Arrowhead High School, at our Saviors on Highway E, in the Chestnut Ridge subdivision on Capitol Drive, and that's just to name a few areas and I know there are many, many more. And even with doors and windows closed, and I repeat closed, the bells can be heard. I do have video of that. The noise is extremely inconsiderate for those who have, who enjoy having their windows open. I had one family tell me they had to close their windows when the bells were ringing for over five minutes. I had another family, including myself, being woken up by seven, the 7:00 AM bells on Sunday morning. And again, I am sure I am not the only one. Also, there are people that need to sleep during the day and I think it's very inconsiderate and difficult with the amount and volume of bell ringing that now occurs. St. Charles and the surrounding neighborhoods have existed since 1956 with little to no problems until the village approved what now amounts to a mega church, which we can't reverse that decision. And while I understand there are no ordinances now in place to address this issue, I would hope that St. Charles could work with their taxpaying neighbors to find a happy medium so that the community does not need to petition the board to take action. As a point of reference, currently the congregational church has chimes that play approximately 21 times a week. I think it's three times a day, seven days a week. I'm not sure if it's three or four. But they're reasonable times and they're reasonable amount of times, maybe a minute at most. I would respectfully ask that if there are any representatives here from the church that they understand that a significant compromise needs to be reached so that further action is not needed by the community or this board. Bell ringing has lasted for at least five minutes multiple times per week. I would like to make that known as well. The time stated was two minutes and I know there are multiple videos floating in the community that confirm that. Let me state that I am not anti-church. I worked as a director of volunteer ministry at ten, for 10 years at a large local church. My children attended parochial grade school. With that being said, I certainly hope that the leadership team at St. Charles takes this matter seriously and acts accordingly. So those are my comments that I hopefully we can get some resolution so that further action doesn't have to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comments?
Mike Katani, 313 Circle Drive, representing St. Charles Church. I'm not going to take a lot of time because I think this might be a separate agenda item in order to, to resolve this. I am in constant contact with Ann Greven, Greven Camp. She's our neighbor a few doors down. We've met a few times. We've had a meeting. We are constantly emailing and talking to each other on the phone. So we are working against that, obviously, to look for compromises. Real quickly, I want to run down the timelines right now. So basically at 8:00 noon and 6:00, there is a single bell toll that lasts three seconds. That is followed up by two more consecutive rings, also lasting three seconds. That is a total of nine seconds with a three-second pause. That rings for 36 seconds. After that, there's what they call a four-bell peel where all the bells swing like this and that lasts a minute and 15 seconds. So the overall swing time is a minute and 51 seconds. Second, this is run on Monday through Friday, only at 8:00 and noon on Saturday. And I'm more than happy to submit this to the board for review along with the folks in back of me. There is a four-bell peel that lasts for five minutes, excuse me, a four-bell peel that will last for a minute and 15 seconds, five minutes before Mass. So that happens Monday through Saturday at 8:25 and then Saturday at 4:55, obviously 7 o'clock in the morning because that's in compliance with the village ordinance, 8:55, 10:55, and 5:55, which is five minutes before Mass and that goes for a minute and 15 seconds. There is an hour strike at 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. This is run Monday through Saturday, except for 5 o'clock on Saturday because the four-bell peel is at 4:55. Then on Sunday, there are no hour strikes and there are no peels, only that it rings after each Mass. That's controlled by a remote control. So it's an education process because when you hit it, it's like the bells aren't ringing and if you hit it three, four times, it's going to sequence that up. So that's a learning process that we have to have our ushers learn. At the funeral, there are 10 strikes, obviously for funerals, and that lasts 41 seconds. And then there's a four-bell peel for all weddings and that lasts anywhere from three to five seconds. Once again, by the remote control. Okay? So that's kind of it is and I'm willing to forward this to everyone. So that's a little history of the bells. So the bells are made out of bronze, so they're casted. So what they do is they're on a swinging motion and they go 45 degrees, the angle, and as the bell comes back, it hits the striker. I had the bell company come and lower that down to 30, the angle of 30 degrees, so it's more of a crisper sounding strike. So once again, we were trying to curve this for everyone. They're bronze bells. They swing. I mean, they're not motorized, so it's kind of where we are with it. Okay? So I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, Belle Wisneski, 511 Rinsom Road. Here to talk about the bells. I'm assuming board members who were, who are absent, like I was here two weeks ago, I'm assuming that you take it upon yourselves to review the video from the last meeting, so I won't go through and repeat my public comments from last time, assuming that you guys are caught up. After the last time I was here, I was happy to see that there was someone, some work being done on the bells. Unfortunately, it made them louder. They fixed a third bell, so there's now three tones, which seems to work sporadically. And the addition of that, or however they fixed it, has now made them exceed the decibel level. That's allowed by village ordinance, Article 10, Section 46, 951B. It states that noise should not exceed 72 decibels. The reading I took showed them at 92 decibels. I personally have not heard, Mike, I did leave you a voicemail. I haven't heard back from you and I haven't heard from anyone from the village at all about them, about the bells. But I'm going to reiterate my three requests from last time. The bells are ringing at 7:00 AM on Sunday mornings. I captured it this past Sunday. It was a minute and a half that they were ringing loudly, 7:00 AM. It's a beautiful morning, could have slept with my windows open, but it wouldn't matter because I'd hear them even with my windows closed. Like I've said in the past, I prefer if there is no bell ringing, especially on a Sunday before 9:00 AM. But I would compromise with no bells before 8:00 AM. I'd like the village to take an official reading of the decimal levels of the bells in full working order with all the three bells working, since I'm assuming that's the objective. And then once again, I'd like to ask that the parking lot lights, at least those that are on Rinsom Road, be off by 11:00 PM. I'm actually going to add one more additional request. I'd like if somebody from the village could get in touch with me between now and the next village board meeting to let me know what you've done or if you're even planning on doing anything to help intervene. This way I know whether or not I should move on with my next planned steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comments? You already spoke, so I can't have you speak again. Does anyone else want to speak? Different day. Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak on public comments? Last call for anybody in the room. Thank you for everyone that gave the comments. At this time, we're going to move on to the first item on the village board agenda, which is a consideration of the village board minutes for the June 24th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the village board minutes of June 24th, 2024?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 24th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
I also abstain. Now we have items related to, to the vouchers. We have discussion and consideration of a payment to American Sewer Services, Inc. for payment number two for the 2024 utilities program in the amount of $68,010.
So yeah, American Sewer is seeking their second payment for this year's utility project. We have looked over that project and staff recommends the payment of $68,010, $68,010 to American Sewer.
I'll make a motion to approve payment to American Sewer Services for payment number two in the amount of $68,010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to approve the payment to American Sewer Services, Inc. for the payment number two for the 2024 utilities program, program in the amount of $68,010. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $195,318.15.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for payment in the amount of $195,318.15.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now our next item on the agenda are items that are regarding licenses and permits. We have review and possible action of a special event application for St. Charles Fall Fest from September 6th through September 8th, 2024. And we also have a consideration of a special Class B, it does, oh, Class B.
Alcohol license.
Alcohol license, class, Class B beer and wine, temporary Class B beer and wine license. Or is it always called special?
Special Class B.
Special Class B. St. Charles would like to present, or is anybody here to speak for Fall Fest?
Sure.
Let you speak first. Just a brief, very brief overview.
Sure, I'm Keith Vandal Arshat, N42 West 33349 Glenview Court in Neshora. And I have been serving as the chairman for the festival for about, I think it's my 14th year. The hours will be the same as they were last year, noon to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday and then Sunday from noon to 6:00. The type of carnival rides, it's the same vendor. That should be the same. Bands are going to vary a little bit, but basically the same hours. So nearly everything you've seen in the past would be the same as what you should see this year.
Question from the board?
Make a motion to approve the special event application for St. Charles Fall Fest, September 6th through the 8th.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the special event application for St. Charles Fall Fest from September 6th through September 8th, 2024. Any discussion?
Is this on? Oh, thank you.
Now it is.
The street banner, do we want to put that consideration in with this as well?
It is part of the banner policy that they are allowed. They just have to give it to us and go.
Just checking, thank you.
As long as there's no significant changes to the banner other than dates, no advertising, things of that nature that weren't previous.
That would be correct. It will look virtually the same as last year. Different dates.
Any discussion from the board on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, in conjunction with that same event, we have the consideration of a special Class B license. This is regarding alcohol, beer, that kind of thing.
I'll make a motion to approve the special Class B St. Charles Fall Fest.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to approve a special Class B license for St. Charles Fall Fest. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have considerations of letter of engagement for the audit services for Baker Tilly for 2024 through 26.
So we have a three-year contract with our audit firm, similar as we do with the attorneys or R&amp;M. It's a professional service, so I'm just bringing to you guys to see if we can do another three-year contract with the current audit firm that we've used for many years.
Did, did we have a three-year term before?
Correct, yes.
Ryan, you're comfortable with it?
I am. I'm very comfortable. They're a professional audit firm. Again, I used to work for them, but they were our auditors before I was here and they have a group that specializes in just governmental auditing. So when you hire some of the big ones, you may get people that are more familiar with corporations or real estate and not government. That's their specific niche. Our auditors are government colleagues.
Motion that we approve letter of engagement for audit services by Baker Tilly for 24 through 26.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the letter of engagement for audit services for Baker Tilly for 2024 through 2026. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a second reading of a bill for an ordinance number 06242024-A, an ordinance amending Section 70-1, operation of motor vehicles in village parks.
I was just going to state, so all these items are to give us, it's not that we have tons of issues, but if we do have issues, right now there's no way that we could currently find, ticket, things of that nature. So it's kind of give some teeth behind it. And again, this is a second reading, so you could put it off to July 22nd or suspend the rules and pass any of these at this time.
Make a motion, we suspend the rules to pass the ordinance at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, but I'm going to ask for clarification. Are you asking for a suspension of rules pertaining to this item only or pertaining to the park items? Just clarifying.
Thank you. To all three park items.
And that was my intent, the second. I was going to question if we could just do it all as encompassing.
Okay. We still have to do the readings.
Right, right.
We have to take them as three if we're going to take the votes, but, I'm sorry, there's five.
Sorry.
Just, we can just make one suspend?
We can make one suspension and address the items with the parks. I just wanted to clarify that your intention of suspension was suspension to take up the, the, all the second readings that we have for the parks.
Yes, that is my intention.
Correct.
And you could, okay. So it has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. So we are under suspended rules. So again, we do still have to take up our item on the agenda, which is consideration of the, the second reading, 624, 2024-A, an ordinance amending Section 70-1, operation of motor vehicles in the village parks.
Make a motion that we adopt the ordinance number 0624, 2024-A, an ordinance amending Section 70-1, operation of motor vehicles in village parks.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance-A, which is 0624, 2024-A, which has to do with the operation of motor vehicles in the village parks. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Still under suspended rules, we have consideration of a second reading of a bill for an ordinance 0624, 2024-B, an ordinance amending Section 70-2 pertaining to animals.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the bill for ordinance number 06242024-B, an ordinance amending Section 70-2 pertaining to animals.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to adopt and pass ordinance number 0624, 2024-B. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have still under suspended rules, consideration of a second reading of a bill for an ordinance number 0624, 2024-C, an ordinance amending Section 70-3 pertaining to park hours.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number 06-24-204-C, an ordinance amending Section 70.3 pertaining to park hours.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a bill for an ordinance number 0624, 2024-C. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Now we have consideration, still under suspended rules, consideration of a second reading of a bill for an ordinance number 0624, 2024-D, an ordinance amending Section 70-4, posting of notices, rules, and regulations for proper conduct in and use of the village parks.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 06-24-2024-D, an ordinance amending Section 70-4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 0624, 2024-D. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Now we have consideration of a second reading, still under suspended rules, consideration of a second reading of bill for an ordinance number 0624, 2024-E, an ordinance amending Section 70-5 pertaining to allowing the sale of fermented malt beverages within specific park land areas.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 0624, 2024-E, an ordinance amending Section 70.5 pertaining to allowing the sale of fermented malt beverages within specific park land areas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a bill for an ordinance number 0624, 2024-E. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. All five of those park ordinances were adopted. Now we have announcements.
Austin Buchholz at the DPW just passed his water operation or water distribution operator certification, so that makes 11 operators that we have out of 13 employees at the DPW. And we have paving coming into town this week in the river reserve subdivision. So that's all I have for DPW.
I just want to say thank you to the many volunteers, dedicated staff members, board members, park board members. I just want to say thank you to the many volunteers, dedicated staff members, board members, park board members for all of their support that made Hometown Celebration a success this past two weekends ago. This year we did add a kid zone to Friday evening, which really helped carry the evening considering the inclement weather that we had later in the night and, and of course, the postponed fireworks. Saturday was a beautiful evening. We had a great attendance for the fireworks, and then of course, Bella Cane. We saw a great show, both from Bella Cane and the fireworks show from Five Star. I just want to say thank you too also to our presenting sponsor, Culvers of Heartland, who sponsored the event with a $15,000 donation. GFL Environmental came in with a $5,000 donation and, as well as, thanks to US Bank here in Heartland, US Bank Corp donated $5,000 to the event as well. We had twenty-three other local businesses who helped support the events in the park and numerous sponsors for the parade on Sunday as well. So it was a really great turnout. We are recapping the events this week with staff and some of our primary volunteers and just hope to continue to grow this event and learn and make it better each year. So just wanted to say a thank you to everybody who came out and supported us this year.
Thank you. It was wonderful.
Good evening. The police department conducted interviews for our part-time administrative assistant position. Our top candidate accepted our offer to move her to our background investigation. Again, Hometown Celebration went well from the police side of operations, and there was no issues noted. And again, I want to thank the rest of staff and volunteers for the great collective efforts to put on a very well-attended show Saturday and the events in totality all weekend, so thank you again.
Thank you.
I have nothing but thank you to everybody that participated.
It was an awesome event, Sarah, so congrats to everybody in the DPW, police department, fire department, and your whole group, so great job.
Yeah, I guess I, and I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse here, but from an announcement standpoint, I couldn't give announcements, announcements without saying something about Hometown Celebration was just fantastic. To see so many people out for the parade, to see so many people out on Saturday, to come and watch fireworks and to spend time together and just enjoy each other, enjoy this community. Saturday was, we've had some rain, hiccups, and things like that, which obviously this year we did too, having to push the fireworks off from Friday, but we have in other years, but you know, a decision was made by this board, honestly, I think it was two years ago, to, to really, two and a half years ago, to really try and make this a weekend event, a real hometown celebration, not just on one day, but over the course of the entire weekend. And I, I think it's been proven to us that slowly, it's not only getting on the map for people from outside of Heartland to come and spend time here, but I think it shows that there's even people that are like, you know, I want to, I want to be down there. It's, it's a good time, and it's just really nice to see so many people enjoying themselves, people sitting out three hours before fireworks. So all the volunteers, DPW, I know I saw you guys in the rain just grinding, and there was many other volunteers. But Sarah, thank you. To PD, you guys were out there, just, but to everyone that volunteered and even does stuff, and to my fellow board members that, that do things to make this happen, thank you so much. Because that's what makes it a hometown celebration, is so many people, you know, partaking in it, and to see people so happy, no one angry, people just were celebrating Heartland. It was perfect. It was really, really perfect. So congratulations to everybody, and I was just so proud to even see that for, for this village. It was just wonderful. I have another announcement, and that's that after one party, there's always time to have another. And on September, on July 20th, we have, the street dance is coming up. It will be on the street. The band is Stetson and Lace. It should get a good following. It's put on by the Chamber of Commerce. It's a longstanding tradition in Heartland that everybody needs to be there. But no, the Chamber of Commerce Street Dance will be going on on the 20th of July. Stetson and Lace will be there. I believe they're, they're having many other activities. I don't want to start naming them off because I don't know all of them. I know they're having a cornhole tournament, and they're doing many other things. But they are looking for volunteers just as we were before Hometown. So even if you can cut out a chunk of two or four hours to go down and help them, please consider doing it. But looking forward to, that's another longstanding tradition for the village of Heartland, so definitely looking forward to that. And I guess, lastly, I'll just say the parade did go off great, but happy Independence Day, even though I know we're past it now, but happy Independence Day to everybody. It's always a cool thing in Lake Country when we are going around this time, and a lot of people have a lot of traditions for it, so. I have no other announcements.
Motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.